All right, we'll call this meeting to order. Tonight is Thursday, June 16th, 2022, and this is Wasika Public Schools School Board Regular Meeting for June. It is 5:30 PM. We are in the Central Building, second floor conference room. And we'll begin with the Pledge of Allegiance. Please rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, could I get a motion to approve tonight's agenda?
Make a motion to approve the agenda?
Second.
We have a first and a second and a discussion. Hearing none, we'll call for a vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimous. Moving on then to recognition of visitors. We have no one here tonight and no emails. All right. I do want to recognize our new Student Council Representative, Addie Wiesler. Addie, thank you for -- did I pronounce your last name right?
Mm-hmm.
Awesome. Thank you for being here. So Addie and Lindsay will be our reps for the next year. Moving on then to payment of claims. Director Mansfield, you had the pleasure of reviewing things this month.
I reviewed the claims for the month of May, and I recommend action of payment for this claim. Account payable $1,659,416.58 plus $11,752.35 for May dental claims and payroll for $867,059.45.
All right, thank you. So we have a first. Can I get a second?
Second.
Dave has a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, we'll call for a vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimous. Can I get a motion for tonight's consent agenda?
I'll make a motion that we approve tonight's consent agenda.
Second.
First and a second and a discussion. Hearing none, we'll call for a vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimous. All right, we'll move on then to our information items, beginning with the Superintendent Report.
Yes, thank you, and welcome this evening, and welcome, Addie. I'm glad you could be here with us tonight. So tonight, my report is really essentially in three different parts. We'll talk a little bit first about the facilities updates and some of the work we've done in the last two weeks after our last work session, working towards finalizing some of the information the board is hoping to see in the next few weeks to continue finalizing that decision on what comes next. We'll also spend some time talking about strategic planning, and I just also have a few miscellaneous end-of-the-year updates to share with you as well. So in the last two weeks, we've had the opportunity to meet with WOLD and also their connection with our project manager that we've used in the past, Kraus Anderson. We're not formally in agreement with either of those individuals at this time, but we're working through the preliminary process with that, with them. You know, we asked, as we talked about in our last conversation, what would be the scope of projects at various cost levels, and they're working through that for us now, hoping to meet again on the 27th of June to see what they've been able to come up with. And I will invite -- I know some people have vacations planned, but I will invite the Facilities Committee, and if Facilities Committee members are unavailable because of vacations, I might reach out to more members of the board just so we don't reach a quorum, but see who might be able to help attend that meeting to hear where they're at at this time. The hesitancy, what I'm getting from WOLD right now, is really they're concerned about accurate pricing, seeing what's happening right now, and so I'm having to do my best to push them to do their best estimate. That's why they decided to reach out to Kraus Anderson as well to get some more feedback on making sure they cost us appropriately based on what we're currently seeing out there in the world. But there is progress happening right there for that, so I feel good about that in terms of our next steps happening. Interestingly enough, one of the reasons why they are nervous, we just did get our June market report from Ellers. They send that to us as the administration monthly, and you know, the inflation report's not particularly good in terms of what the federal Treasury talked about late last week, predicting that 4.7, maybe looking closer to eight at the year-end for year-over-year inflation. And so that's part of what WOLD's hesitancy is, to figure out what's going to happen yet with that. So just not as much fluctuation with interest rates. Right about -- bonds are selling right now at 3.3%, and Ellers is still encouraging us to think about it could be four by the time we're saying sell, but as of this now moment, that's not that high, not four. Other things I just wanted to bring back to the conversation, we talked last week or two weeks ago about the LTFM plan, which you'll approve the LTFM plan or ask questions for it to be modified later this evening, consider for approval, which you had a chance to look at over the last few weeks based on our workshop conversation. You know, the LTFM plan is written as if we don't make any decisions right now to move forward. If you recall from our needs assessment that WOLD did in 2019, '20, there was $22.34 million of recommended maintenance district-wide to happen over the next 10-year period, which now we're two years into that. Of that, $6 million alone was for Hartley, $2.3 was for WIS. I just wanted to bring that back up to the attention of the board to remember that's there. The other thing I wanted, I think we were trying to get at the last work session, but we weren't able to really ferret this out to the point where I think we wanted to go is to answer the question of what could change if we do move forward with the bond question. Right now, looking over the next 10 years, we're looking at an average expenditure amount of about $650,000 per year for LTFM costs. So when you think about the fact that our LTFM revenue is about $650,000 to $700,000 per year, that's not going to get to $22 million in any way, shape, the way you do the math. So it's just so things get deferred, as they would have to be, that's how it works. Of that, on the LTFM plan, if you look on the far-right column, you see the unbudgeted projects, things we've identified that really should be something we consider, that's sitting at about $14.5 million right now. So we have about $14.5 of unbudgeted things we've identified as should do in the next 10 years that is sitting on our LTFM plan. So just a consideration for the board to think about as they think about the next steps. One thing I also, I know, I don't remember which board member, I think it was you, Addie, who asked, you know, so what changes? What changes if we were to do something differently with a bond? So I went through the next fiscal years, and Elizabeth helped me and Colin helped me, and we looked at fiscal years '23, '24, and '25, and if we were to set a date at some point in the next few years, not necessarily this fall, but sometime in the next few years that we are going to explore a bond opportunity, then in the fiscal year '23, so just this next fiscal year, there's about $440,000 of projects that we have assigned to Hartley and/or WIS that we could potentially consider deferring because we wouldn't need to do them, such as something like a bathroom fixture, an accessibility issue. We might not spend money on doing that south parking lot at WIS if we're going to be doing some more significant construction in a few years down around the road there. Some of them have to happen, fire safety, health and safety, some of those things have to happen. But those are some things that we could identify, and you see how that would impact the next few years for our LTFM plan, which then those dollars could go to other sites, working towards other things. I did spend some time thinking about the traffic at the intermediate school. If we were to put, you know, 430 more students out there, that makes a pretty significant change to that. Had a chance to meet with our city engineer this morning and talk about the cost of accessing the property from the north side, particularly on the northwest, west end of the building, and he had some ideas I hadn't thought of about accessing even further to the west kind of through maybe one of the lots that's for sale there on the northwest part of that area there. So coming through that, we do have a cost per square foot, or sorry, a cost per linear foot of that 24-foot asphalt road. Now we're just looking at how would you actually draw it through so we can get the actual footage so that we can have a pretty good cost of what we know right now accessing that road would cost. So that is, I think, and based on what, and Nate Willey is the city engineer, he's a really, really skilled engineer, he said, you know, that would support some of the extra traffic at WIS. We also have some ideas about the north, the north road and the north side of the high school. We're really the only user there, so if we were to eliminate the parking there and have that maybe be the bus drop-off, so parents can drop off on the west side of the building, that maybe takes some pressure off the Burger King intersection up there a little bit. So there's some ideas to consider there that were happening. The good news about the cost of the, and it wouldn't be a city road, it would be a district drive, so that's all our property, so that'd be a positive thing in terms of whether or not we're allowed to do it, all the permits we'd have to do, is that that would run us in the range that we could consider a capital facility bond for that. So it would not necessarily have to be part of the building bond because that would be less rough estimate, maybe $750,000, is what we're looking at right now, less than a million, which would be kind of where our range is for sitting at that capital facility bond option. The other thing we could do with that potentially, depending on what we think about our timing, is if we decide we're going to commit to this option, but now is not the right time to ask the question, because it's a capital facility bond, we could explore the road, the drive back there before we do anything, and then maybe potentially show our community, look, we've addressed the traffic problem, now we can go and build that addition back there. Something to think about for the board to consider. So I feel good about the fact that we're, it also, as I was drawing it on my Google, Google Earth's got some really good things. I didn't figure, I learned about that this morning when I was sitting with Nate, but you know, one of the things we talked about several months ago was ADA accessibility out to those backfields.
Yep.
And if we have a drive coming through the back end there, it could significantly shorten the amount of asphalt we would have to then utilize to provide full access to all of our fields in the back. And it really would extend our campus, if you will, to the west side because the road kind of stretches out into the field a little more. I have Joe Hedervar right now is going to, working with me on the actual usage of all those fields back there, by whom and by how much, because if we eliminate fields, that's a significant issue we have to make sure we have an answer for it too, because we wouldn't, if there's a road going through there, not everything's going to be able to stay the same way it is right now.
Did you have a chance to talk about like more parking or only about traffic?
Yeah, parking, yeah, we did. So if we were to run, yeah, for a couple different ways. So if we, essentially where the playground is right now on the west side could be an extended parking lot coming through that way, as well as going back around the backside where the access to the ball fields could be, we could put some smaller lots out in those areas as well for that.
It'd actually be nice for reaching those fields.
Is that what you're thinking about, or you're thinking about a different area?
No, I was just wondering.
Okay.
Because if you have 400 students, you need to account for parking.
Yeah.
And currently, if you have school even, you don't have parking.
Yeah. Good question.
So when you eliminate some, you would need to not only add the same amount, but also more.
Yeah. And that's a, yeah, so what we did do though is we did talk about the cost per square yard of a parking lot. So as we think about drawing those things out, we have some answers to those questions as we finish that design with WOLD. So, yeah, good point, yeah. And then the last thing on the facilities just update piece is from the Hartley building potential, you know, I just had some conversations with a couple agents and just connections I have with real estate, and without making a cold call to anybody, hey, you want to buy the building, didn't do that, but I went around just kind of seeing what's happening right now, and the, you know, commercial buildings are not moving particularly fast right now, but residential, you know, residence as affordable housing is in demand. And so right now, they're not seeing a lot of interest in, because of the cost of renovation. But as things evolve over the next, you know, number of months or years, and as that inflation adjusts and things come back to normal, you know, I don't think there'd be an issue with putting that back into private ownership at some, in some capacity. And so that would be, that would be the plan. It's not a moneymaker for the district to do that, but we certainly would not, we certainly would hope to get the value out of it as best we could with that option there for that.
Do we have any idea of what the bare land is worth that Hartley sits on?
I don't off the top of my head, no, but I could certainly get that for you. Yeah, I'll bring that to our July work session. Yeah. And so really, my intent tonight was to update you with how the conversation is going. We'll have a few more weeks of conversations. I did double-check because I misspoke at the last work session. The statute for the board taking action on a bond item is 46 days prior to the election date to actually do pass the resolution, and it's 60 days before MDEs tell you, yes, you can do that. So really, we are still on in good pace, even if we happen to choose to go this fall for that. So I think our, my idea would be the July work session is now the time to pull all this together and really hash that out where our next steps are going to be, where our timing is or isn't going to be. Think that through. Questions?
The bottom section of Hartley of the roughly 440, about 650, is that part of the 10-year budgeted expenditures, or is that part of the 14 million? Because looking at 14 million, I would think maybe there's others of that as well, or is that just at all?
So you think about 655 per year, okay? The bottom three, those are just the Hartley and WIS projects that we think could be removed if we're going to.
So they're in the budget right now?
They're in the budget right now.
Yeah, these are budgeted items.
Yeah, they're currently budgeted.
So the 14.5 of unbudgeted may have additional.
It may have some additional things we wouldn't need to do, but they're not budgeted for now anyway.
But conversely, that $655,000 could then go towards some current unbudgeted items, right?
Yeah, for another site perhaps.
Yeah.
I was kind of looking at it too from, unlike the 10-year deferred as well, if we're asking for X amount of in a bond, that actually is covering some of the things that we wouldn't have to do elsewise, so.
Correct.
It's paying for differently.
Right.
Yeah.
Right. Yeah, one of the most significant things that the project scope conversation with WOLD will uncover is how much deferred maintenance can you get done at the WIS site with the bond process you have, with the dollar value you have? Because if it's just to put the classrooms on and the gym on, then all the deferred maintenance stays with WIS that we'd have to do anyway. So that's just something we'll have to work through. So update for that, okay?
Yeah, so we'll continue at the July workshop, and if we're ready to make a decision, we'll make a decision, otherwise if we need to keep talking, we'll keep talking, so.
Right, it's an ongoing conversation right now.
Yep.
All right. Next thing, Caitlin, next slide there. Okay, we also just wanted to update you on what we're doing with strategic planning for this summer and beyond. If you can believe that our current strategic plan does end here coming up now in two years, so we started thinking about, in my world and our world as the board and superintendent, two or three years out is coming pretty quick, so we started thinking about how that works. So the results for this year's vision card will have here in June, end of this month and into July, mostly waiting on student data right now and some things like that from the Department of Education. And then we're going to have, part of that will have an administrative date day-to-day like we did last year to really analyze where we're at, what our performance indicators have been, what the progress we're making, so that we can update the operational plan here in July with that. And if you recall, that's the three-year spread, so we need to add a year at the end and see what we're going to do the next year, and then see what went from learning work to implementation work and standard work in the years we're currently in. We'll also look in July, if we don't have time at the July work session, we'll have some time probably during the July board meeting to look at updating the board agenda for three years. That's the one that we talked about, we had the papers around the board last year doing, around the walls doing that. We'll create the next year's vision cards, and then this year, something that's going to be different is we're going to bring the building leadership teams, whether that's the high school department chairs, the elementary schools, however they do the leadership teams, and we're going to have some data daytime for them as well, to really look at their performance from this year and help plan into next year. What happened last school year is what is very typical and common, is that by the time we shared it with them in September and October, we're trying to teach, get the school year, right? So we're going to get it in front of them earlier this year into August and help them create our 22, 23 building vision cards. We'll be here in August and September. And then for us, from a district-wide perspective, we're looking at implementing vision cards this year, getting into the spring of '23, and really looking at the administrative team reviewing that strategic plan, what's working, what's not working, what we need to tweak, so that in the fall of 2023, we can really begin the board and community planning process for our updated strategic plan. With hopes of spring of '24, we'll be adopting the next five-year strategic plan. So that's coming up here in the next, before you know it, it'll be two years from now. We'll be looking at the next strategic plan, thinking of that. So also just wanted to update the board, that's certainly on my mind as we plan this summer. And then the last page is just some additional updates for you. We are looking at now calendar planning for 2023, '24, and 2024, '25. As we've talked about as a board, we're going to do a little bit more comprehensive calendar planning process, starting here in July with some staff, with some community groups. I'll be reaching out to all of you to see if you're able to share, to spend some time with me. We'll have a couple of community meetings, we'll get some things going on that way, and really get some good input on what our calendar can look like going forward for the next two years. The pandemic has required us to be more flexible with our calendar. I don't think my entire career, I've come to the board with as many calendar changes as I have in the last two years. That's not normal to do that. So we'll be putting the work in right now to plan the next two-year calendar, so we don't have to make those changes midstream, hopefully. Jenny Peña is working hard on our communication and website strategy here for this summer work. She did an exceptional job with our building teams, getting, keeping the website a little more current, keeping things more up to date. There's still work to do, we know. And this summer, as she spends a little bit less time getting the weekly updates from each building, she'll be working on the website, making sure that continues to be a relevant source of information for our community. We have interviewed, and we have a fantastic candidate for the cultural liaison position, and so we are working through that process right now to find out if that's a best fit for the individual. We also are interviewing next week for the Teaching and Learning Assistant position, which will be the role that Clint Link is vacating, working on some of that CTE role as well. And we have, we have four candidates we're interviewing for that position, two external and two internal, so I feel really good about the interest we've had in that position. And the last bullet update is I think our hope is fading, I think we can have a special session with that piece, but that is what it is as far as how they've ended up. Now, a couple weeks ago, probably two months ago by now, Charlie had the opportunity to visit with Representative Petersburg and wanted to connect with us then after the session was over. So now that it's pretty clear, they're not, probably going to head back for a special session, I'll give him a call tomorrow or Monday and see if he can't join us at one of our upcoming work sessions, or even have a special work session if it works for all of us, to just visit about the work he's doing up at the Capitol and what he sees the next few years meaning for us. Senator Jazinski is not as communicative, if that's the right word to look for it, so, but we'll continue to help. He's also very interested in what we'd like to know. I think he wants a better relationship with us here in Wasika, and so I'll be reaching out to him as well. Hopefully, we can get some off-session communications going to help guide them into, because if they did not spend any money this year, the conversation will be there for next year.
Yep.
So if we can start talking with them now, that'll help us a lot. Very good. That's my update for this evening, and a really positive end to the school year. I think that, we talked about this at the last meeting as well, I guess the one additional update, and Caitlin, maybe you can even speak to this too, we had a really good staff day yesterday. Dr. Cinder Campoff was over from Minnesota State Mankato, and led just a, almost two-thirds of a day, just a wellness retreat for our staff. We had about 30 staff from Wasika go, so about 10% of our staff, and several hundred from around the region attended here, and staff of all different, all different job duties were there, and it was just a great opportunity to remind ourselves that own your why, and why do you do what you do? And it was, it was very important to me that we didn't give our staff anything else to do, but just to think about and to take care of themselves, and that was good. Caitlin, did you think that was productive?
I quite enjoyed it. She just spoke very well, she kind of kept pace since she went and gave actionable things, techniques, and tactics of years. I think it was very helpful. That's it?
Awesome, thank you. It's really cool that we offer that, not just for our staff, but for surrounding school districts as well, and that's really important.
Yeah, and all staff, all, each district, one of the drawings was the superintendent will substitute for you for the day, and so I will be teaching eighth grade science someday this fall, which is probably better than, well, I shouldn't say that, which is different than other positions that a superintendent drew. So that's okay.
Nice.
It's in my skill set, put it that way.
Can I volunteer in that class then?
That would be great. I'll put you to work, that's for sure.
Interesting. Awesome, well, thank you so much. Moving on then to our reports from Elizabeth. Thank you for being here in person.
Yes, no, it's always great to be in person with everybody, so thank you for having me tonight. This is our annual preliminary budget discussion. So for school districts, our business year runs July 1 through June 30, and as a school district, we need to have an approved budget before the business year actually starts. So we bring a preliminary budget to the school board in June for consideration, and so we are looking at our 22, '23 school year. If you want to go ahead and move forward. So this is just our general fund, and what we do is we take what our final budget was and where we think we're going to end the year as of June 30th, 2022. And so that's the far-left-hand column is where we took our final budget, and that's what we're going to start our year with. Of course, we'll go through the audit process, and that will get tightened up, and actual numbers will be used for our final budget, but this is our starting point for the year. What we do is we take a look at our projected revenues for this upcoming year, our projected expenditures, and where do we think that ending fund balance is going to be as of June 30th, 2023. A little bit more fortunate this year in that we had more knowns at the beginning, you know, as we're preparing for next year versus last year. Legislature was still in session, our contracts were not settled at that point, and so those are knowns for this coming year, which are kind of nice to at least one less guessing game at this point. As we have all discussed over the past couple of years, enrollment has been a little bit more of an unknown than it normally has been. We have continued to project declining enrollment, and I think we're finally settling in to what our actual enrollment is going to be. We've done, I think, a nice job of adjusting as appropriately as we possibly could have based on that instability of what our true enrollment is going to be. Unfortunately, we have over the past couple of years, so since fiscal '20 to fiscal, what we're projecting for fiscal '23, have reduced about 100 students. And so again, like I said, I think we're settling into now that new reality of what our student count is going to be, and we're just going to continue to watch our expenditures and adjust appropriately. Anytime that there is an opening, a resignation, a retirement, we truly are taking a peek at that and saying, okay, is there any way that we can deliver services differently based on our student count? Is that something that we do need to refill? So not that we haven't done that in the past, but that's just something that we continue to do, I just want to make sure that that is known, that we do evaluate every single position that does come up, just to make sure that we are staffing appropriately moving forward, and taking advantage of those opportune times versus having to do something a little bit differently and affect positions in a way that we wouldn't have wanted to. What we truly focus on for our general fund, and not that, not that we don't on the other ones, but the one that we, that we as the school district and school board have the most discretion over is that unassigned fund balance. All of the other ones have great purposes, but they're very restricted on what we can and cannot use them for. So really, where we have the most discretion is that unassigned fund balance, that last line. We are projecting to start the year with a little over $5 million in the fund balance, and we are projected to end the year with a little over $4 million in the fund balance. That is an 18, almost 19% fund balance, that's still within our fund balance policy of the 15 to 35%. As we have had discussions, we have, you know, been spending into that purposefully and intentionally, but also, again, watching it as we're going. We did make adjustments, we did make an additional five FTE adjustments for this upcoming year for fiscal '23, and we're doing the best that we can to maximize the federal dollars that are available to us, to help us gradually right-size, again, as we're really settling into what our true student count is going to be. You know, it was, again, like I said, I think we did the best that we can for adjustments, but with really those unknowns, we didn't want to make any brash decisions with staffing before we really truly knew what that student count was going to look like. I think some really positives within this story is that we are projected to spend about $180,000 less in fiscal '23 than we were in fiscal '22. So we have been making some gains on trying to hone in on those expenditures and try to reduce where we appropriately can. For the revenue side, we're projected to, I don't want to say gain, but realize about $650,000 more in revenue in fiscal '23 than in fiscal '22. So overall, the story for next year is we really are working on that unassigned fund balance, and now we're just trying to, yes, there is still a deficit, but what we're trying to do then now is align from the prior years just based on that drastic drop in student enrollment, okay? For, just to touch on the federal dollar for just a moment, in the budget documents on the narrative, it does outline every single amount of federal on the, the narrative, it does outline every single amount of federal dollars that we have received, what we've used them for. On our website, there's also a link to our direct plan for our S R three dollars. So I just want to make sure that they're providing as much transparency as possible of how much we have spent and what we have used those dollars on. At this point in time, we will, by the end of '23, use a majority of our federal funds by the end of fiscal '23, even though we do have until fiscal '24 with some of them, most of that will be spent by the end of fiscal '23. Okay?
Can I just ask a question?
Yes, please.
There was the $313,000 for career and tech.
Yes.
Can you just provide a little bit more details?
Right. So basically, that is the amount that the unassigned fund balance covers for our career tech programs, because it's not 100% funded by the state. So if you look up at that top line, we receive about $109,000 of revenue for that program, but the true cost of the program is $423,000. So we use that unassigned fund balance to continue to fund those programs. So that would be things like fax, our business program, the egg program, our woods program, our welding program. So it, it's just, at, at one point in time, they were, it was a restricted fund, and I just continue to show that of, yes, we, we continue to value these programs, but this is the cost of, of making sure that we're able to continue that, the use of those programs. It's very similar, like cross-subsidy for special ed, right, is another way to look at it.
Yes. So it costs a district, it costs a district $300,000 to have those programs.
Correct. Yes. Okay. Any other questions with the general fund? This is just to kind of reiterate what I was talking about with the general fund and our, what our student enrollment has done. This is our true student count, so we're going to look at a couple of different things, but this is, if we were counting students in the seats. Now, our actual ADM, what we're funded on, is a little bit less than that. So right now I am projecting for fiscal '23 to be funded on 1,708. So you can see, we ended the year with actual student count of 1,727. That does include our PSEO students, and we don't receive full funding for PSEO students, because that funding follows them to the college that they go to. A great program, but that's just the difference in, in the numbers. If you see, if you read the narrative, why I'm projecting 1708 versus 1727. So that's the difference there. But as you can see, that, that, we are, when fiscal '20, we ended at 1804. Again, that was student count, and this year we're ending at 1727. Okay? This is just another way to look at it. So this is where I'm coming in again, where, actually can go to the back, want just one more. So you can see in 2021, our June count was 1740. Now, if you can go to the next one. This is the aid that we received. So 1731 is what we actually received in aid, if that makes sense. So that's why there's some of those differences, because again, it's taking out those PSEO students or the part-time PSEO students, right? And that money follows them to the college, and then we get the remainder of any time that they are with us. Okay? Go ahead.
The only thing I would comment on the, the last one there, Caitlin, the bars, is you can see between the blue and the yellow, that's our non-resident and our residents, open enrollment amount. So one of the things we've worked really hard in the last year is to determine where are our students? These 100 students over the last few years, is there something we can control in terms of how that has gone down? And as you can tell by that ratio, our market share of, of resident students has not really changed much. The non-public enrollment has not changed much. Homeschooling has not changed significantly. We are losing those students in Wasika, which is something that's hard for us to control as a district. And so when you think about what did we do over the pandemic to, to lose students that we can control, not a lot. And so that's a pretty accurate count of this, the folks that live in, in Wasika right now.
These are the remaining funds within our, our, our district, and so we do track all of these separately: food service, community education, our debt service, and other things like our custodial funds and our dental funds. So same premise, we take where we thought we would end, June 30th, 2022. What do we think our revenues are going to be expenditures and where we're going to end fund balance-wise. Couple of things I do want to mention with this slide for food service. This was another tricky year to estimate. So at this point in time, all of the federal waivers will expire as of June 30th, 2022. So that, what that means for all school districts at this point is that beginning next year, we will be going back to the free pay and reduced status. So I think Ross did an excellent job, but really what we're trying to do is estimate again, okay, what are our true sales going to be now? You know, after two years, what are sales going to be again? What's going to be our state revenue and our federal revenue? So for this, I feel it's an extremely conservative budget, because again, we're just, we're trying to ease back into what normal looks like again. And so when we bring a revised budget to you, we'll have a couple of months under our belts. What does, what has the food sales been doing and be able to tighten that up a little bit. But like I said, I think this would be worst-case scenario. Another thing with food service is their fund balance is meant to invest back into their program. So part of where their fund balance started and where their fund balance ends, so you can see that they are spending into their fund balance, but again, that's intentionally. So it, it is meant to invest in equipment, and there is almost $200,000 worth of equipment built into this budget. So they're doing exactly what they should be doing with the food service budget, being self-sustaining and being able to continue to invest in their program.
Because that 357 is approaching the limit.
It is.
For what their food, their fund balance can be statutorily, right?
Correct. Yes. So they, they do have a fund balance limit per state statute that, and, and actually, we were just a little bit over, partly because we weren't able to invest in some of the equipment we had wanted to, supply chain issues. And, and that is completely appropriate, but hopefully now we will be able to move forward with those investments in fiscal '23. Community education has been doing another great job. That has been one fund that we have been taking a peek at, just to make sure that they are continuing to grow their fund balance and/or maintain it. Really, that was the big thing. One thing that we are watching with that is that school readiness fund. And again, they've been doing exactly what they need to be doing. They've been growing their programs, but it's a fee-based program. And so this, that's a little bit of the trick, right? How do we make sure that the programs that we offer are affordable for our families, yet at the same time cover the costs, because it is funded differently than our K-12 program? And again, I think they have been doing a great job. And overall, community ed fund is still projected to have a positive fund balance. So again, very confident and comfortable with what we're presenting to you, entire budget-wise, and move forward. This is just another way to look at it, and these are all in our, our budget narrative as well of just the big piece of the pie, right? So overall, we are projecting $33,166,276 as our expenditures. You can see how that's all broken up based on the various funds. The revenue, very similar to how that piece of the pie is, is divided, $30,937,464. And then I just wanted to, to kind of hone in again on that general fund revenue of what does make that up. So student, student count is huge, right? We keep talking about student count, student count. And, and where we receive that money is through the state based on our student count. As you can see, 75% of our, our revenue for general fund is based on our student count. So that, that is a huge driver of, of the decisions that we make as a district. Federal's a little bit higher. Sorry if anyone might go back for just a second. Federal has been a little bit higher these past couple of years, just because of those one-time funds that are coming in. Normally, that's around 4% to 5%, and as we start spending those down, that will drop back down again. Okay, sorry, thanks Caitlin. This is another graph I like to show, again, just what has our fund balance history been? So the yellow is the days, the amount of days that we've had in our fund balance or estimated at the end of the year, and the blue is the percentage. And then the red bars are that 15 to 35% fund balance policy. So as you can see, we have been investing in our programs. We've doing, been trying to put the money exactly where it needs to go. We're still within that range of, of what the fund balance policy states. And then as 2022, excuse me, has, is coming to an end, and we're auditing that, hopefully that is even just a little bit stronger, which helps 2023 in essence as well.
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
It seems like we are going down closer to 15%. What, what are your thoughts, how we are going, address that, that we are not going after 15%?
Right. Yep. So we do know that there's work ahead of us for fiscal year '24, and as I said before, any new resignation, retirement, that is going to be something that we consider. So we would, we're still going to continue to work on that fund balance for fiscal '23, even though we're presenting a budget to you now. This is the information that we have at this point. It really will be taking a look at, again, how do we appropriately right-size the amount of staff that we have based on our student count. So we will be presenting more adjustments to you for fiscal year '24.
And is the, the area of focus is only about, you know, staffing stuff, or is there any other options that we have to get back up?
The most, the most significant cost is staff, because it's about two-thirds of our budget is staffing cost. But just last week, our deficit spent this week, spend for next year was projected to be, projected to be about $1.5 million, and we made some technology and some curriculum decisions to bring that down to where it was, to the $900,000 that it is now. So we're looking at every operational expense we can as well. One thing that is, is a little bit misleading is that our staffing level, we are well-staffed right now for the student count that we have. We left it the way we did because of the federal money that we had coming in, and so as not to reduce staff during a pandemic. But now we, we do have numerically, now you look class by class, it's not that simple, but from a straight numbers standpoint, we do have some staff decisions we have to make in the next year. Yeah.
Thank you. Just another thing I wanted to point out, we do try to provide as much information as we possibly can on our website. So if you go to departments, district office, you can go to all of these, but there is an option called district budget. This will be presented or posted after the board meeting this evening. And you can see all of our past budgets that have been approved as well. So preliminary, final budgets, there, there's history there, our audit financial statements. If there's ever a question, I please do invite anybody to give me a call, send me an email. I'm happy to have a conversation, should you have any questions about the budget or any, any other financial information. Any questions with the?
Can you go back to the pie charts with the expenditure and the revenues? Or wait?
So this one's just the general fund revenue?
Okay.
That's revenue expenditure?
All right. So 33, 33 million, roughly 33 million, and then what was the, the revenue?
30.
Almost 31. Okay.
Yep.
Because, but we're only spending in a, a million? Can you, can you explain?
In the unassigned category.
Oh, okay. All right. Thank you. Okay.
Yes.
I'm like, in my head, it was.
You're like, this is not, yes, in the unassigned category.
Thank you. All right. Then I'm good.
Some of those restricted funds are, like the food service, we talked about some different things.
Yes. No, that makes sense. I appreciate that. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? All right.
Thank you. Should we make this, the time to make a plug to encourage people to move to Wasika and join our schools? We think it's a great place to be, but. All right. Moving on then to our committee and board member reports. Scott, do you want to start us off?
Sure. So I was, so I'll start with personnel. We talked about contract statuses and, and where we are with staffing levels was the main, main topics. I was also at finance. We went through the preliminary budget. That pretty much was the whole meeting. And then also facilities. So we discussed what was coming up and what we discussed in our, what we were going to discuss in our workshop for this month. So that's what we got.
Awesome. Dave?
About the only thing I have is I watched the MSBA webinar today at 1 o'clock, and it was on the, what happened, really what didn't happen.
Can you explain it?
At the legislature this year, and they took about an hour to tell us that nothing much happened. There's a lot on the table. People are wondering if there's going to be a special session at some point in time. The people that were putting on the webinar, they just said, it's anybody's guess if there'll be one, and if there's going to be one, when it'll be and what it'll be all about. So yeah, so it was still worth, worth my time. Was interesting, but basically, like I said, they took an hour to say that nothing much happened. So.
Yeah. Frustrating. Awesome. Thank you.
I had the finance committee also, which we, as we went through the same things, which Elizabeth did a great job at shrinking that down to 10 minutes versus we spent an hour. That's a big into the details for everybody who's, the rest of you who made me wonder if we'd asked most questions. We tried to poke it, poke it a lot of ways. We also talked about policy, I had a, we had a policy committee meeting, which were mostly student policies of things that students go through, so that was also very good and informative.
Thank you. What's going on with student council? Other than you guys are happy. Are you happy at summer?
Well, we had our student council lectured, and our president for next year will be Aubrey Hanson. I think she has a lot of good ideas coming in. So we have the jaywalk, which I think Tricia already came in and talked to you guys about it.
Yes.
But I think we have a date for like September 25th, maybe? And she's really excited about it. She wants to get all, a bunch of food trucks and everything. So, and let's see. So a lot of summer activities started, like strength and conditioning, and marching band started just yesterday. Yay. And we have a parade tomorrow already. We have state track, which I think our boys team with Kyle, Christian, Demarius and Kayden, they like broke the school record, which is pretty great, but I don't think we did too well overall as a team, but it's all right. And Jack Anderson made it. Did very well at track, third in the 100 mile and first in speedway. Is that correct?
Yes. At Special Olympics, he was second in 50-meter run and first in the 400-meter walk. So.
He was so awesome. He was on TV and everything, in the footage. He was very happy. I remember, I was in his class when they announced it.
Oh.
He was very happy.
That's, yes. And he loves the attention, so thank you all for the pleasure.
So yeah, um, she covered most of it, but yeah, a lot of summer sports are in full swing. Volleyball, there's tennis, there's football practice starting, there's basketball, summer basketball, all kinds of things going on. Addison said the marching band just started, and the Lake Crystal Parade is tomorrow at 6:00 PM. So please come and see our new marching Jays for the season as we start. And then our final big thing going on, community ed, Wasika's Little Rascals is putting on the play Goldilocks on Trial. The dates are June 24th at 7:00 PM and the 25th at 2:00 PM. Tickets are $5. Please come support our kids. They are working so hard on this show, and they are such a talented group of actors. I have had the privilege of getting to work with them and helping them learn their lines, and they are doing such a fabulous job. So we are very excited to put on the show.
Is that going to be at the pack or?
Yes, it's at the high school pack.
Okay. Awesome. Well, thank you. Thanks for giving up a summer evening to come sit in a board meeting. So, Adida?
I just have a superintendent evaluation meeting, and we will be presenting the final outcome a little bit later.
Yes. Yeah, or the summary. Yes.
The summary.
Spoiler alert, he's fine, but. It's favorable. It's good. So, Charlie?
Well, I've had the opportunity to go to a couple of field and track events, the district event and, or regional event, and then I did not get to go to the state event, but Adida's son was at the, you were, your son was in one of them or your daughter?
There was, my son and my daughter were in sections. They didn't make it to the state.
So then I, I had a granddaughter that made it to the state in, in triple jump, I believe it was, is what she, what she was into. She didn't do, she rappelled 15 out of 16 at the state, but she got to the state, you know, which is important, and it wasn't her best day. She did not have her best day. But it was kind of exciting being at a, just a great, a great bunch of kids up there, and they were, everybody was working so hard, and it was good to see all the various talents that all the, you know, it keeps kids in shape, you know? I saw the football players, the football players in track, and they were running their, running their legs off. It was just fun seeing that all. And having the public, and public participation that goes along with that. So, very good. So.
I was on the superintendent's valve and the finance and the personnel, and you guys have kind of all talked about them.
Yep. And I just had the superintendent valve, and so we'll give the, the summary of that a little bit later on the agenda. So we'll move on then to recognition and positive board feedback. And Mr. Demille, do you want to start us off again?
I actually have been on vacation, and I don't have anything.
All right. That is fun.
I would like to recognize one of our high school teachers, Bill Kushel. I got a chance to talk to him a little bit a few weeks ago, and he was telling me about. I got a chance to talk to him a little bit a few weeks ago and he was telling me about how we've had this project Lead the Way curriculum for a number of years now, which you, I guess, can find in a lot, whoops, in a lot of schools around, but we're going to be going to a new curriculum, it's by Siemens, Siemens Engineering Curriculum, and I believe that we're the first school in the state of Minnesota to try out this curriculum. And I think Bill, Bill's going to head this up and if you don't know him, stop and meet him sometime, he's just a great teacher and a great guy, and he does a lot for the kids that he has and for the programs that he, that he teaches, so just wanted to recognize Bill and, and also to, you know, maybe sometime he could come and, once he gets going, tell us a little bit about this new curriculum.
It's very exciting, it's, it's, it's edge, it's on the edge, it's great stuff.
Yeah, Bill's got a lot of passion for that department.
He does.
It flows right into the kids, it just explodes.
He kind of, he kind of reminds me of a younger Jergen Peters.
Yeah.
Jergen was like that, an egg, so.
Great, well, thank you, Dave. Grant?
I had two things I was going to recognize, summer is a time usually when all the technology staff gets to get all the computers and refresh them all, so I know for them, it's, I think, a really busy time and it's all under the, under the hood stuff, so people don't really see it, but I, from my being in that industry, I know it's a busy time, so thank you for all the work they're doing and the extra efforts they have. Also, Elizabeth put a lot of time in the budgeting to fill this as she always does, it's very organized, it's very clear, so thank you for all your work you do on that.
Thank you, Grant. Ladies?
I would like to congratulate the athletes this year since we did, I think, I think we finished the school sport season very well, so I think they all worked really hard this year.
Thank you.
I would like to thank Ms. Farr and Mr. Pollak for all of their work in the theater this summer, both with the Goldilocks on Trial play and another community ed play that's happening. There's a lot of moving parts in the pack right now, so I appreciate Mr. Pollak's work and Ms. Farr's work on the place.
Awesome, thank you.
Yeah, just, the school years, years, year is over, but it seems like the teachers are still everywhere, you know, like sports activities, they are just continue, work hard with our children, I just wanted to say thank you for everything what they have done over the school year and continue during the summer, yeah.
I'll second it.
I'd just like to really say thank you to the principals with working with you guys with the budget items, there've been a lot of hard decisions where we're looking at either staff or putting off, maybe doing curriculum changes, those aren't easy to make, so they've got, you know, they're worried about their staff, not only in their buildings, but then they're looking district wide, so it's very cool how everybody works together.
Well, I just kind of want, I'll jump on a couple of you, I also wanted to recognize our staff, but those, those staff who are still working during the summer with students particularly, our teachers in summer school, paras, food service, I know our food service program got started this, this week or, or, yeah, custodians of course are still, our, our buildings are still really busy and I appreciate everyone who continues to put, put that effort in even though it is summer and they, they deserve a break, so it's, it's coming, I know that they don't work all summer long necessarily, so. Alright, that moves us on then to our action items and it's not as scary as it looks, I hope. Alright, we're, first we need to acknowledge our insurance carrier for 2022, 2023 school year. The board will be using EMC as a property and casualty insurance carrier and as a workers' compensation carrier for 2223. Alright, and then we'll move on then to item B, does someone want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the 2022, 2023 preliminary budget.
Second.
Alright, we have a first and a second, any, any discussion or further questions?
No, we're sitting really well, I mean, a lot of tough decisions.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, I don't love that 18% either, but I, I know that there's things we can do to turn, start turning that around in '24, so.
The other thing that was discussed at our meeting is where actually other people have their, their set minimums for that, for that range, and we're actually still well above what most people have as a set for their high point.
Okay.
We're, we're still above that, so.
Thanks for the silver lining, Scott. I'm just kidding.
We're still very healthy, yes.
Yeah, no, that's, that's a really good point to make, so.
Knowing that work needs to be done and we're going to have to address a few things. Sets us up nice.
Yes, definitely. Alright, we had a first and a second, any further discussion? Alright, hearing none, we'll call for a vote, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Alright, motion carries unanimous. This next one is a resolution. And do they just need to read the part that's underlined in the agenda or do you want? That would be just fine, I just wanted to compare both, I think that would be just fine. Okay. Alright, well, I'll, I'll make a motion for this resolution in conjunction with the 10-year long, long facilities, long-term facilities maintenance plan, whereas to qualify for long-term facilities maintenance revenue, Minnesota Statute 123B.595 subdivision four states a school district must annually adopt and approve a 10-year long-term facilities maintenance plan consistent with this law.
Second.
Caitlin can pick who has a second, so we have a first and a second. Well, I, never mind, we'll say it's, we'll save it's Dave since we do have to write it down, so Dave has a second, so.
I got the first second.
No, I had the first, yes. Alright, Scott can have the next one, no. Alright, this is a roll call because it's a resolution, so Caitlin, could you please read the roll?
Grant Shepherd?
Yes.
Dave Dunn?
Yes.
Scott Demille?
Yes.
Katie Youngberg?
Yes.
Charlie Creve?
Yes.
Adina Mansfield?
Yes.
Julie Anderson?
Yes. Alright, motion carries unanimous. Can I get a motion for item D?
I'll make a motion, we approve the LTM statement of assurances.
Second.
I'm going to give that one to Katie. We have a first and a second, any discussion?
We need buzzers.
I know we need buzzers. Alright, hearing none, we'll call for a vote, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimous. Can I get a motion for item E?
Make motion to approve 2022, 2023 food service prices.
Second.
We have a first and a second, any discussion? I did just have a question about the salads and wraps, are they always a higher price than the regular entrees? Yes, I do believe so. Okay, alright, I know we haven't had, this is an issue for a while, so.
I'd say that's a, of all the places you can buy food, we're not going to raise the prices, we might be the only place, so that's.
Yeah, right, that's a good point. Yeah, we should probably point out, yeah, these are the same prices that we've had in a, at least last year, so, yes. Alright, any further discussion or questions? Alright, hearing none, we'll call for a vote, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimous. Can I get a motion for item F?
I'll make a motion to approve the 2022, 2023 activity fees.
Second.
We have a first and a second, any discussion? I think except for one fee, they were all, it's all the same as well, so, yes. Alright, if there's no further discussion, I'll call for a vote, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimous. Can I get a motion for item G?
I'll make a motion to approve the 2022, 2023 proposed fundraising activities.
Second.
First and a second, any discussion? I do apologize, there will be more coming. I know.
I was just going to ask, because lovely, like the band and the choir and.
It's usually like two pages or.
Yeah.
I think we had one year where we saw this like five times or something, and the last couple of years it's been better. Yep, and now we're trying to get back into the swing of things again, so yes, we will get there. Thank you for your patience. Any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll call for a vote, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimous. Alright, the next one is also a resolution. What all do you want me to read? Caitlin wasn't sure, do you want me to read most of it or?
Resolution.
I can read the, it's fine, I can just read it.
It should be, yeah, you really should read the whole thing for the.
Okay, I'll read the whole thing, so I will make a motion, this is for resolution for establishing dates for filing of affidavits of candidacy, be it resolved by the School Board of Independent School District Number 829, State of Minnesota, as followed, follows. One, the period of filing affidavits of candidacy for the Office of School Board Member of Independent School District Number 829 shall begin on August 2nd, 2022 and shall close on August 16th, 2022. An affidavit of candidacy must be filed in the Office of the School District Clerk and the $2 filing fee paid prior to 5:00 PM on August 16th, 2022. Two, the clerk is hereby authorized and directed to cause notice of said filing dates to be published in the official newspaper of the district at least two weeks prior to the first day to file affidavits of candidacy. Three, the clerk is hereby authorized and directed to cause notice of said filing dates to be posted at the administrative offices of the school district at least 10 days prior to the first day to file affidavits of candidacy. Four, the notice of said filing date shall be in substantially the following form, notice of filing dates for election to the School Board, Independent School District Number 829, Wasika, State of Minnesota. Notice is hereby given that the period for filing affidavits of candidacy for the Office of School District, School Board Member of Independent School District Number 829 shall begin on Tuesday, August 2nd, 2022 and shall close at 5:00 PM on Tuesday, August 16th, 2022. The general election shall be held on Tuesday, November 8th, 2022. At that election, four members will be elected to the School Board for a term of four years. Affidavits of candidacy are available from Dave Dunn, School District Clerk, or the Superintendent's Office, 501 East Elm Avenue, Wasika. The filing fee for this office is $2. A candidate for this office must be an eligible voter, must be 21 years of age or more, on assuming office, must have a resident of the school district from which the candidate, must have been a resident of the school district from which the candidate seeks election for 30 days before the general election, and must have no other affidavit on file at the same primary or next ensuing general election. The affidavits of candidacy must be filed in the Office of the Superintendent and the filing fee paid prior to 5:00 PM on Tuesday, August 16th, 2022.
Second.
Thank you. We have a first and a second, any discussion? Other than this is the notice, it's a school board election year and.
Do I have to carry those affidavits with me all the time in case?
No, you direct them to Caitlin. So anyone who asks, you just point them her way, so. I did not realize, I was telling Katie, I didn't realize you had to be 21 to sit on the school board, that's interesting, so. Alright, if there is no further discussion or questions, we'll move on to a vote and this is a roll call. Caitlin?
Grant Shepherd?
Yes.
Dave Dunn?
Yes.
Scott Demille?
Yes.
Katie Youngberg?
Yes.
Charlie Creve?
Yes.
Adina Mansfield?
Yes.
Julie Anderson?
Yes. Alright, motion carries unanimous. I need lots of water after that. Can I get a motion for item I?
I'll make a motion, we approve the individual contracts as presented for Mike Georgina, Heather Harms, Linda Hallow, Peter and Ross Larson.
Second.
We have a first and a second, any discussion? Alright, hearing none, we will call for a vote, all those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries unanimous. Can I get a motion for item J?
I'll make a motion to approve the purchase of services agreement for mental health services for the 2022 summer session. Second.
First and a second, any discussion? Hearing none, I will call for a vote, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimous. Can I get a motion for item K?
I'll make a motion to approve the agreement concerning instructional staff sharing between WPS 829 and Southern Plains Education or Ed Cooperative Number 0915.
Second.
We'll give that one to Adida, Scott, I'll get you eventually. We have a first and a second, any discussion? Alright, hearing none, we'll call for a vote, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Alright, motion carries unanimous. Alright, I will make a motion to approve Superintendent Eric Hespeth as the identified official with authority or the Iowa effective July 1, 2022. Designation of an identified official with authority for education identity access management. The Minnesota Department of Education Professional Educator Licensing Sanders Board and the Office of Higher Education require annual designation of an identified official with authority for each local education agency that uses the, the education identity access management system. The Iowa is responsible for authorizing, reviewing and recertifying user access for their local education agency in accordance with the State of Minnesota Enterprise Identity and Access Management Standard, which states that all user access rights to Minnesota state systems must be reviewed and recertified at least annually. The Iowa will authorize user access to State of Minnesota Education Secure Systems in accordance with the user's assigned job duties and will revoke that user's access when it is no longer needed to perform their job duties. And I love that Caitlin just inserted my name in here, but I'm just kidding. I, Julie Anderson, recommend the board authorize Superintendent Eric Hespeth to act as the identified official with authority for Wasika Public School, ISD 0829, effective July 1, 2022. That is all.
Second.
Thank you. First and a second, I probably didn't have to read the whole part, but at this point.
You did a good job.
We even know why we call it Iowa, even though we live in Minnesota.
Individual with authority or something like that.
Yeah, I think I've said it a few times.
Yeah, yeah.
Identified official with authority. Yeah, very exciting. Any further discussion? Anyone else want to take over that job from Mr. Hespeth? No. Alright, I will call for a vote, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
And then we need to go L and M.
Are you serious? I wanted to read that so badly. I was.
We did.
Well, just a minute, can I finish my vote and then go back?
Yeah.
Okay. Did we finish the vote?
No.
I didn't think we did.
Yeah, we did.
Alright, we're good. I'm like ahead of my, I'm going on vacation in a couple hours, I'm ahead of myself, so. What, oh, I don't want to read the superintendent evaluation, that's why, no.
I'll do L first.
Alright, so item L, can I get a motion for item L?
I'll make a motion to approve the independent contractor agreement with Huatha, High Huatha Home Care for 2022, 2023 school year.
Second.
Alright, first and a second, any discussion? Alright, hearing none, we will call for a vote, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Alright, motion carries unanimous, alright, now I'm on M. Alright, anyone else want to like run for school board and maybe take over my job? I'm just kidding, it's one of those days. Alright, so these, before we, I asked for a motion, I'll just give the summary, so every, every year we do a superintendent performance evaluation based on the superintendent goals that he set a year ago. So this is indicated by School Board Policy 304, that Wasika Public School District School Board conducts this annual evaluation of the superintendent. All seven school board directors participated in this evaluation of Superintendent Eric Hespeth. This evaluation was based on the four goals Mr. Hespeth established for the 2021, 2022 school year. Board members were asked to rate each goal on a scale of highly effective, effective, developing and ineffective. For goal one, which was student achievement, five board members selected highly effective and two members selected effective. The board appreciates the vision card process and would like to see this continue, which you've already indicated it will. We're looking forward to seeing the first year's results later this summer. For goal two, which was based on community engagement, three board members selected highly effective and four members selected effective. We recognize that community engagement is happening in a variety of ways, i.e. your newspaper column, membership on area boards, your physical presence at, in the buildings and in other ways, et cetera. The board would like to see how the district is benefiting from this engagement more directly in the future. Not that we, we know we're benefiting, we would just like to have more of that obvious. For goal three, facilities planning, six board members selected highly effective and one board member selected effective. Mr. Hespeth's leadership for the district was evident in the facility planning process and has set us up for the next phase of planning implementing our facility improvements. For goal four, which is his doctoral program, four board members selected highly effective, two board members selected effective and one board. highly effective, two board members selected effective, and one board member did not answer. Uh, the board is very supportive of this doctoral program and we like, we'd like to keep hearing about your eventual thesis project. Um, in summary, Mr. Hudsith conducted his annual goals in a highly effective manner. The board feels that Mr. Hudsith's strengths are his communication skills. Uh, the board as a whole continues to appreciate the weekly email updates. Also, the addition of the vision cards keeps the district on track and accountable. The board identified community engagement as a challenge to continue to work on, especially as we address our facility needs and a probable referendum in the near future. The board also provided feedback on ways we can assist Mr. Hudsith going forward. Uh, we feel that the board needs to assist with community engagement and being visible in the community in the ways that work with our own strengths and availability. And the board would like to be more purposeful in our efforts to engage with our community. Uh, so it was correctly submitted June 16th, 2022 by the Evaluation Committee. So, so that was the summary of everyone's, um, yes, feedback. So thank you. So, um, can I get a motion then to approve the superintendent evaluation?
I'll make a motion that we approve the Superintendent Evaluation.
Second.
Uh, we have a first and a second. Any further discussion?
Great job.
Thank you.
Hearing none, then we'll call for a vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimous. All right, so we already did item N. We're just gonna move right along here. Um, and normally I check things off. I don't know why I skipped ahead. So, all right, can I get a motion then for item O?
I make a motion to approve final 2021, 2022 district calendar.
Second.
First and a second. Uh, any discussion?
The only thing I would add for anybody watching at home who might be wondering what that is, that's about the snow day and the e-learning day we had this year.
Yes.
No schedule changes coming up or anything different.
And it's got a legal statutory requirement that we approve it.
Yes, yep.
Yes. All right, uh, any further discussion? All right, hearing none, we'll call for a vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimous. Uh, can I get a motion for item P?
I make a motion to approve 2022, 2025 transport, trans, transportation service agreements.
Second.
Uh, first and a second. Any discussion? All right, hearing none, we'll call for a vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimous. Can I get a motion for item Q?
I'll make a motion. We approve the Clifton Larson Allen Engagement Letter.
Second.
Uh, first and a second. Any discussion? All right, hearing none, we'll call for a vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimous. Can I get a motion for item R?
I'll make a motion to approve the disposal of food service equipment.
Second.
Uh, first and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, I will call for a vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimous. Can I get a motion for item S?
I'll make a motion to approve the disposal of college and the school's textbooks.
Second.
First and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, I will call for a vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimous. And can I get a motion for item T?
I move, we approve, uh, review the policies of policy 526, which is a hazian prohibition, uh, policy 527, which is considered a student use and parking of motor vehicles, patrols, inspections, and searches. Uh, policy number 528, student parental, family, and marital status nondiscrimination. Policy number 529, the staff notification of violent behavior by students, and policy 530, which is immunization requirements.
Second.
First and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, we will call for a vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimous. All right, um, upcoming items and reminders. Um, the district will be closed on Monday, July 4th for Independence Day. Um, our next work session is Thursday, July 7th. And our next regular meeting is Thursday, July 21st. And in between, there will be the county fair. So you can find us at the district table out at the fair, sweating away with everyone else, but I'm sure. Um, any other updates to add? Okay. Can I get a motion for adjournment?
I'll make a motion for adjournment.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned. Thank you.